Meeting to order and begin with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's begin tonight with public audience. Dave.
Hi.
And we just ask that everyone sign in, just so we get your name and where you live.
Do I have to do this? Hi, I'm Dave Ryan. I live at 20 West Ledge in West Simsbury. I'm the chairman of the Simsbury Performing Arts Center. I noticed on the agenda tonight, there's a sign policy being considered for the banner that goes over Hop Meadow Street and the banners on the side. And some of those might impact the Tuckin Mountain Music Festival in terms of duration or limitations on duration. And I just would like to ask you to please make sure that we don't hinder their ability to sell tickets, which is really important. And that's really all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks. Anybody else? Joe.
Hi, I'm Joe Tracy. I've been here before. Talk about my favorite topic, the Deepwater Wind Proposal. First of all, I want to thank you for the town and the Board of Selectmen in particular for backing an appeal of Deep Waters, the decision by the CSC. I think it's very important that if we have any leverage at all with Deepwater, it's through the appeal process, both by the town and by the abutters. I was very disappointed to find out that the reason that the Department of Agriculture dropped out was they were advised by the governor's office and the Attorney General's office that they really didn't have much of a case to litigate and therefore they should drop out. I find that very disappointing. I understand that settlement negotiations are underway, and I would encourage you to involve members of the public as well as the abutters in any decisions that are made before the final settlement, if there is going to be a settlement assigned off on. I think it's important that we are all on the same sheet of music and agree to whatever it is we're going to agree, whatever they propose and whatever we can negotiate with them. So I really encourage you to, you know, reach out to the rest of the town as well as the abutters in that discussion. As you know, the CSC issued a cease and desist order on the project, the Sprague Solar Farm, because of runoff issues. So I think it's really important that we take a real hard look at what the current science is and, you know, make a fact-based decision on what's impervious and what's not impervious in a solar field. I would encourage you to reach out to both Deep and to the Department of Agriculture on a consulting basis, since they're no longer parties to the discussion, to work with town staff as far as Deep Waters runoff plan, to make sure that we don't end up in the same place that Sprague did. And as well as Southwick, I don't know if you're familiar with what happened up there, the runoff plan was insufficient and it ended up floating, literally floating, two of the neighbors' houses, ripped through their driveways and out onto Route 10 because the plan was defective. So I would encourage you to take that extra step, to work with the state. They're going to have to issue them a permit, the general construction permit anyway. Work closely with them so that whatever they come up with, whatever Deepwater comes up with for a plan, both addresses the runoff issue as well as any runoff to the aquifer and the private wells on Howard and Knollwood. So just wanted to bring that to your attention, and thank you very much for your time.
Yeah, thank you, Sean.
Chris. Chris Barnett, 15 Occho, former chair of the defunct Economic Development Commission. I know economic development is a topic of conversation this evening on your agenda, and I just wanted to say a few words. I would encourage you, I know there's been some talk about some possible funding set aside for some economic development strategic plans, not sure what that's going to look like in the future, but would encourage you to take a look at the good work that's already been done from the Economic Development Task Force. We have been known to do studies and then not implement the stuff that's in the studies, okay? We have the Fair Weather Study, which was done many years ago, which still, some of that information is very relevant today, and we've yet to implement that. We had some very talented, devoted volunteers who spent over two years, close to two years of their life contributing towards the recommendations that the Economic Development Task Force presented to the Board of Selectmen. And I think it's worth a revisit because it provided, I think, a good roadmap for the future, and I really think that just implementing some of the recommendations in that plan would benefit all of us without spending additional money on another study. Because the question really becomes, when are we going to spend money to implement what we're studying? And because we had such a large group of very talented local people who had a vested interest in really caring about what came about from the task force, I would implore you to really reread that, go through it, and pull out the pieces that are relevant for your discussion, because I think they shouldn't just go by the wayside. Okay?
Thank you.
Thanks, Susan.
John.
Joan Coe, 26 Whitcomb Drive. The public audience section of the Board of Selectmen meetings is there for people to address the board with their concerns. Public audience has been mandated by court order with a resolution affixed to the wall at the main meeting room. The mandate also requires public audience at all selectman meetings with at least five minutes to address the board of selectmen. This mandate does not require the board to listen or inquire about the concerns. At the March 12, 2018 Board of Selectmen meeting, Selectman Cheryl Cook was extremely concerned about the brick pavers on Hop Meadow Street as a serious risk to people with disabilities. However, on November 28, 2016, and December 12, 2016, I addressed the Board of Selectmen about the dangers of pavers. Did Selectman Cheryl Cook listen to my concerns? My concerns should have been addressed immediately. My concerns to the Board of Selectmen, November 28, 2016, were as follows, and I quote, "During the last budget process, $550,000 was approved for a streetscape on Hop Meadow Street. Raising the level of the sidewalks with brick pavers over the cement sidewalks makes it a difficult transition with utilities that have to be raised to level the walk. Other transition areas require an engineering nightmare to make all transitions level. In a rush to complete the task to implement the $550,000 streetscape, First Selectman Lisa Hevena did not consult the Chairman of Aging and Disabilities and would have raised concerns about dangers of the uneven services for disabled and elderly, causing tripping hazards and vibrations of wheelchairs. Many of the new brick pavers were compromised with broken bricks installed, creating an imminent danger. The Americans with Disabilities Act requires continuous smooth services for safety, not brick pavers on sidewalks. Our First Selectman Lisa Hevena spent the last meeting discussing her caring and needs for the senior community. There seems to be a huge disconnect with the unsafe brick pavers. Brick pavers require continual maintenance for safety. Anyone walking on Hop Meadow Street will note the crumbling and uneven surfaces that increase the risks for tripping. My picture here shows just a small area of hazards resulting from the brick pavers. The Board of Selectmen should evaluate the risks associated with the brick pavers. The paver should be removed and a smooth surface should be returned to the sidewalks on Hop Meadow Street, a waste of taxpayer dollars," end quote. On March 12, 2018, meeting of the Board of Selectmen, I brought to your attention the concerns I had about town reimbursements that were made on Jamie Rabbit's personal credit card that appeared to be of concern. Jamie Rabbit is Director of Planning and Community Development with a salary of $117,880. I stated at the meeting of March 12, 2018, I quote, "These reimbursements appear to be cause for concern. I am asking for review of my allegations," end quote. I addressed the Board of Selectmen about my concerns with Jamie Rabbit on September 26, 2016, November 14, 2016, February 15, 2017, March 13, 2017, July 27, 2017, November 27, 2017, January 8, 2018, January 22, 2018, February 26, 2017, and March 28, 2018, without any acknowledgement of my concerns. All my concerns are posted on Simsbury Patch for your review. There are allegations that Jamie Rabbit has used compensatory time for days out of the office. According to town's personnel rules, quote, "Exempt employees are required to work as many hours as necessary to satisfactorily perform their job duties and therefore generally not entitled to compensatory time. However, in extraordinary situations, exempt employees may be granted compensatory time in the sole discretion of the First Selectmen," end quote. Did Jamie Rabbit get approval for compensatory time? According to the town personnel rules, and I quote, "Town employees are employed on that will basis. This means that they will be terminated, it could be terminated any time, for any lawfully permissible reason," end quote. Are there any lawful permissible reasons for Jamie Rabbit's termination? The personnel rules should be revised to reflect a town manager. I am concerned that money is being spent for additional employees in social services to address the addiction crisis. The problem with addiction cannot be solved with employees. It all starts with the family, physicians, and pharmaceuticals. The doctors are over-prescribing amphetamines for people with hyperactivity, ADHD, and misdiagnosing the disease for others. This creates a high proponderance of prescriptions with doctors running prescription mills. There is a documentary on Netflix called Take Your Pills, which addresses the epidemic of people prescribed Adderall, a performance-enhancing drug that is used by students, professionals, and athletes. Since Adderall is over-prescribed, many families have this drug in their medicine cabinets available to family members and easily accessible to anyone. The best source for mind-altering drugs is in the home, with easy availability to mind-altering pills, alcohol consumption, and marijuana use. Cope with your issues, don't mask them with drugs. And all of my comments will be on Simsbury Patch, news feed on Facebook, and also Twitter at Joan Coe, and Simsbury Forum topics. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much, John. Anybody else want to speak tonight? Yes, Susan.
Susan Messino, 41 Madison Lane. I'd like to quickly just first follow up on the hazardous waste collection that you mentioned as part of your budget deliberations. And I know that you calculated that it's $30,000, I think, for 600 people that you're serving with the collection. But I would encourage you to think about the fact that you're protecting the entire town by people responsibly disposing of their hazardous waste. I'm not sure how many other opportunities people have, but if people are going to dump it irresponsibly, that's something that's impacting everybody, not just the 600 people that are getting the pickup. I'd like to spend my other four minutes just submitting some documents and just mentioning something about the forest management plan that we've been tracking for a few years. I know that Jerry did a nice overview of the timeline, and he presented that to the Conservation Commission a few meetings ago. You know, initially that it was something that Avon was doing, that Simsbury decided to try to look into and pursue to get a little bit of money, get a little bit of money from our forests. I was involved as a member of Keep the Woods and also as an individual in this, basically since May 2015, when we knew there was a maintenance plan for the Ethel Walker Woods. We didn't know that there were forest management plans. And I've made a little timeline of kind of just a summary of public input and participation since then and compiled some documents on that. Basically, I will just summarize by saying that, and I know that Jerry just provided kind of the basic information on the timeline, so I wanted to provide this additional information of, you know, submission from members of the public, submission from experts, and I think that this is something we should proceed with very carefully. In general, the natural state in New England is a forest, and what we should do before we decide anything is decide what forests we're going to leave alone. If we're not leaving any forests alone, which is our natural ecosystem, as an educator, this keeps me up at night. I really find it alarming that we are, we think that we have to weed or trim or take care of everything, which is something that evolved as the natural state in New England. That should be the first decision. What areas are we going to leave alone? And then you would decide what areas do you need to maintain as a young forest, as a shrubland, as a thicket, as a meadow, et cetera. So I think we just need to kind of take a landscape view of this. There's really no reason to pick Onion Mountain as the first forest out of the four plans. That concerns me because it's a wildlife corridor and it's a trap rock ridge. Trap rock ridges are imperiled habitats in Connecticut. That was not considered in the plan. I just, I don't know where to start. I have so much information about this. It's very difficult in five minutes in public audience to convey this information. But I've, you know, compiled a bunch of information, and I hope that you will review it. And I really thank you for your time and careful attention to this matter.
Thank you, Susan. I'm always glad to spend time as well, because this is, you know, you can't get to the bottom of this issue in five minutes. Appreciate you coming down.
Right. Thank you so much.
Sure. Anybody else tonight? Yes, I have.
Diana Moody, 7 Ossie Way. And I'm also here to just really back up Susan Messino and our esteemed group of people, Keep the Woods, that worked so hard to preserve this property. As a matter of fact, I've never worked so hard in my life. So I really, as I said, I'm here to back up Susan, but most of all, it's because there has been a lack of audience during the Conservation Commission hearings. And so we feel like that lack of presence could mean that there's a lack of interest. But there is not that lack of interest. I think a lot of it is, you know, people are busy, we don't have time to do that. But how this very special piece of property is managed is very near and dear to us. And I'm with Susan. There are times that I lose sleep over it. I think about and I worry about this land and how we're going forward with the preservation, not just of this property, but all of our properties going forward in Simsbury. So I hope that you consider this very carefully, and I know that you will find the right way to manage this property. And the only other thing is that, we talked about this a lot with our Keep the Woods, and that whenever we preserve this property, and we work so hard to get funding and have people donate, we promise to preserve this property in its pristine state for perpetuity. So please keep that in mind as well, and I know that you'll do the right thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak tonight? Okay. Thank you. In that case, let's move on to the First Selectmen's Report and the Town Manager Report. So, brief budget update. On Thursday, March 15, the Board of Selectmen adopted the 2018-2019 budget, and you can learn more by visiting the Department of Finance page on the town's website. The Board of Selectmen's recommended total operating budget for the town is a little under $21 million. It maintains current services and programs, and includes the addition of a full-time social worker position to meet the growing need of some of our residents. On March 28, which is this Wednesday, Selectman Askam and I will be presenting the budget to the Board of Finance, and then the Board of Finance's public hearing is scheduled for April 5. AARP volunteers are providing free income tax filing assistance at the Simsbury Public Library Tuesdays through April 10, and to make an appointment, you can reach out to the senior center. Transportation update. The Connecticut Department of Transportation has closed the Farms Village Road sidewalk between Simsbury High School and the Farmington River Trail. Pedestrians and cyclists should now cross the intersection of Bushy Hill Road and enter the trail from Bushy Hill. That intersection has improved pedestrian signals. The Farmington Valley Trails Council holds its ninth annual Trail Wide Cleanup Day Saturday, April 14, 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Volunteers cover a one-mile stretch, starting from six staging areas, including Iron Horse Boulevard. The Simsbury Public Library is hosting a volunteer expo on Saturday, April 28, 10 to noon. Participating organizations should set up between 9:30 and 9:45. Tables and space throughout the library will be provided, and the public's invited to attend. Lastly, public safety. In recent months, our police department has reported a rise in vehicle break-ins and thefts. The vast majority of these thefts happen with cars that are left unlocked or have the keys inside. And we're, you know, we're blessed to live in such a safe community, but it's always a reminder to take steps like locking your car and removing the keys, since these seem to follow a pattern. There's more to come in the update that we email out tomorrow. Maria?
So I just want to echo what First Selectman Wallman said about the Board of Finance presentation. Again, that is this coming Wednesday night at 5:45. That will be in this room, and all are encouraged to attend. For our departmental news and notes, our library has received a grant from the Lehman Institute of American History. That grant will enable us to do some programming that focuses on the treatment of veterans as well as the peaceful transfer of power through elections. The library will be partnering with the Historical Society, the middle school, and the high school to bring this program to fruition. An update on our leadership team recruitments. We have our first round of interviews for Finance Director scheduled next week on April 4. The application deadline for our Director of Culture, Parks, and Recreation position is this coming Friday, March 30, and we currently have interviews, first round interviews, scheduled for April 23, and Board members Cook and Peterson have agreed to assist with that. And we have completed first round interviews for our Police Chief position. Those were held just this past Thursday, March 22. We are proceeding with next steps in the recruitment process, with the intention of bringing a preferred candidate to the full Board of Selectmen by mid-April. We also have information to report that we have received notification from Eversource that they will be doing some vegetation management along their transmission line here in Simsbury. That work is expected to occur in spring and summer. That will include tree trimming, tree removal, and brush removal. At this time, our understanding is that Eversource will be contacting abutters with additional information before any vegetation management activity occurs. Our understanding is that they will also inform the town of that activity as well, and we plan to make that information available on our website.
Great.
And, oh, just, sorry, under special events, I know we spoke about this at our last meeting, but just wanted to include the information on the Veterans Suicide Prevention Program as that is upcoming this week. And I'm not sure, Cheryl, did you have anything on this particular program that you wanted to add?
No, only I reached out to the group, for the Community for Care, to see if they wanted any assistance in promoting the event, so I sent it out to our group so that they could help in the distribution of that.
Thank you.
Okay.
That's my report.
Great, thank you. We have one presentation tonight, and I think we'll keep it pretty informal, but, you know, this stems from, you know, public comments that we got at the last board meeting and this meeting regarding the forest management plan for Onion Mountain. This after the Conservation Commission, in a four-to-two vote, approved the forest management plan. And I really just wanted to take the opportunity to see if any board members had questions for Jerry. But before we do that, would you mind just taking, you know, basically a minute or two and just sort of bringing us up to date on how we got to this point?
Yeah, in a minute, go back 30 years, and just, and really, I think Susan, I think, alluded to it, that, you know, it really came to light, the town of Avon had embarked on a forest management program, and, you know, I think we saw some of that, and we, you know, in talking with their, actually, it was their Public Works Director who oversaw, it was a forester by my background, and we talked with him, you know, we talked a little bit about it, and, you know, just, you know, looking at some of the land that we had, it was just, you know, we have some, just some tremendous pristine resources here, there was no question. And, you know, in talking with him, we, you know, kind of saw the benefits of going in this direction, and we looked at a number of parcels, and as was also said, the premise or the way it was structured down there and the way that the Selectmen approved it here was that it was to be a self-sustaining program, that any money that was, or actually, any improvements that were made had to come from funding that came from the timber harvest in any of the parcels. So that was the way it was structured. And we went out with an RFP to bring in a consulting forester, and the firm of Farucci and Wilkie was selected, coincidentally, the same firm that wasn't in Amman, and 30 years later, they're still actively doing forestry work down there, as well as other municipalities. And I'd say we had a very good relationship with them. They brought folks up from the Yale School of Forestry to look at some of the properties we had. And the one thing I took away from it even then was that really, every property we have is unique, and that no two should be treated the same way. And I always kind of held that, and I think that's the way we approached it. And we did do some timber harvesting. We actually did about six separate parcels, starting in Onion Mountain. There were actually two sections of Onion Mountain, Stratton Brook and Bushy Hill. We actually did one where Eno Farms is now. We did one by the landfill, and we did one at what's called the Darling Hills property, which actually abuts Stratton Brook Park. And the idea was that we do it in a 10- to 20-year cycle, so we did those six. And the other thing I should mention is Beldon Forest was one that the folks in the Yale School of Forestry were just marveled at. And I guess if there's one that's an old-growth forest, you know, that would be it. I don't think it was ever touched, and they, I remember them comparing it to Cathedral Pines in Cornwall, which was devastated in a tornado background at times. So, you know, from there, once those were completed, and one of the, I think, the good byproducts was the visibility that it gave. I think the public really became more aware of these areas, some of which no one really knew about. And one of the things that we did was to schedule some walks, you know, environmental education was a piece of it, trying to improve some wildlife habitat areas. And I think the biggest thing was to really make these areas, make the public aware of these areas, and, which I think it really did accomplish that. So going forward about 15 or 20 years later, I was, then Selectman Mary Glassman asked me, you know, where we were. And we were really at that 15- to 20-year period, and she said, you know, we talked at length, and I believe talked with the Conservation Commission, and felt like, well, let's go back into it. And that's really where I pick up with the memo that you have in front of you, in terms of the timeline and how that developed. And I will say, you know, since then, the town acquired the Ethel Walker Woods, which interestingly had been actively managed and harvested for years. That's actually how, from what their Director of Facilities told us, that was how the trail system developed. Those were the skid roads that were used when they did their thinning. So as I say, you have the memo with the timeline from there and where we are. I know Conservation has spent a great deal of time, and I believe that they're drafting a memo to you folks on how to proceed with that. So that's really, you know, where we are now.
Yeah.
And so I would agree, I think, you know, the public definitely should be, you know, should be involved in this. I think certainly never in the tent that they weren't. And so that's really, you know, where we are. I'd be glad to answer any other questions.
Thank you, appreciate that. Are there any other questions for Jerry?
I have one.
Yeah.
Sorry, Sean, I am going to talk. But Susan, very kindly, has brought to our attention a couple of times the old-growth forest designation for Beldon Forest, and I'm wondering what consideration you are giving that, or the Conservation Commission is giving, to making that a permanent designation so that forest is not part of the plan?
Yeah, you know, I don't know what the process is to give a designation like that. Others probably would. I don't know.
Susan has a bunch of information on that, which she has shared with us, but...
Yeah, I would agree.
And as you mentioned it yourself...
Wholeheartedly with that. And again, the only downside that I've seen, and again, I have the good fortune to live near there, I try and walk in there a lot, the only downside that I've seen is that we've had a number of trails, you know, particularly when trees come down, they come down, and what might have been a walking area or a trail system is no more. So you see a lot of them that get diverted, and, but it's a jewel. It is just a, you know, just unbelievable for this town to have. So I would certainly concur. I don't, people far more knowledgeable than me, and I point to the School of Forestry when they came up, you know, said the same thing. I don't know what's involved in that designation I would wholeheartedly support.
And I don't claim to have any special knowledge in that, just that it has been presented to us before, and I think it is worthy of some consideration.
Yeah, I think great. If that could be done, I think it'd be great.
So I noticed that it's...
I don't, people far more knowledgeable than me, and I point to the School of Forestry when they came up, you know, said the same thing. I don't know what's involved in that designation, I would wholeheartedly support it.
And I don't claim to have any special knowledge in that, just that it has been presented to us before, and I think it is worthy of some consideration.
Yeah, I think, great, if that could be done, I think it'd be great.
So I noticed that it's mentioned as one of the forests in the plan, so if that...
Because there's a plan doesn't necessarily mean that there's going to be thinning done at it either.
I know, but if we're going to designate it, maybe it should be exempt, or however that works. I don't know how that would work, but perhaps it should be given some special consideration.
Other questions for Jerry?
Jerry? In attending the Conservation Commission's meetings, my understanding is actually the deed for the Beldon Forest actually restricts what we can do on that property. And I don't profess to be a forester or anything else, but my understanding is it's already in the deed that it will be protected. We can go in and fix the trail per se, but not go in and do cutting, you know. But I think to Cheryl's point and other people's, you know, to the extent we can, we want to do that, but you also have to balance things in all of our forests.
Right, right, agreed.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jerry.
Very welcome.
Appreciate it. Okay, moving on to selectmen action. Item A is their motion to accept, with our thanks, a donation from Stop &amp; Shop in the amount of $2,954.40 for the purpose of supporting our Cheese Day and Food Closet programs.
So moved.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Yeah, with our thanks, and that motion passes unanimously. Tax refunds. Is there a motion effective March 26, 2018, to approve the presented tax refunds in the amount of $580.07 and to authorize Town Manager Maria Capriola to execute the tax refunds?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes unanimously. Item C is the appointment of interim Finance Director. So as you know, Sean Kimball. Oh, Sean. Your last day is second week of April-ish. A recruitment for his replacement has been initiated, and Maria is recommending the appointment of Christine Hutton to serve as Finance Director and Treasurer in his interim. This recommendation's already been endorsed by the Board of Finance and the Personnel Subcommittee. Anything you would add about Christine, Maria?
Sure.
I think with Chris's background, she will be tremendously valuable and helpful to us during this transition period. She's an experienced Finance Director in Connecticut. She has a CPA. She is also certified by Government Finance Officers Association as a Certified Public Finance Officer. Again, just having tremendous experience. She is able to come and help us out a few days a week during the transition. She is retired, but is back from Florida in early April, so the timing also lined up. But again, I think that she would be quite an asset and help to us during that transition period. Also, we were very fortunate, Sean had suggested, and I concurred, that it would be valuable to have Chris, if possible, overlap with him for a brief period of time. We are able to do so in the scheduling, and the salary savings from Sean's departure will cover any compensation for Ms. Hutton during that period of time.
Any other questions? Okay. Can I have a motion effective April 14, 2018, to appoint Christine K. Hutton to the position of interim Finance Director Treasurer until the date upon a permanent Finance Director Treasurer officially begins work in Simsbury, and further move that Ms. Hutton be compensated at $75 an hour?
So moved.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion passes unanimously. Item D, the Water Pollution Control Authority needs to replace a boiler that recently failed. This was not budgeted for, and the cost of replacement and installation is about $30,000. So with that, is there a motion effective March 26, 2018, to approve and recommend to the Board of Finance pursuant to Simsbury Charter Section 809, a supplemental appropriation from the Water Pollution Control Authority's Sewer Use Fund balance in the amount of $30,794 for the purpose and installation of a boiler?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes unanimously. Item D, so on this one, Sean or Melissa, can you fire up the projector? So, as you know, the budget that the Board of Selectmen approved came in above the 1.75% guidance from the Board of Finance. Some members of the Board of Finance have recommended that we prioritize the capital items, so if they do request that we, you know, make some cuts from this budget, that we will, you know, have done some of that due diligence prior to Wednesday's meeting. So what we have is a couple of slides, and my recommendation for how to handle this is to put the items up there and basically categorize them as high, medium, or low, with the idea that, you know, if anything needed to be cut, it would most likely be those low items. Comparing with Maria and other town staff, we obviously, you know, I don't, wouldn't be in favor of putting off capital items, they're going to be significantly more expensive in future years. Certainly, anything that would compromise public safety. So, those are, I think, the guiding principles that Maria sort of laid out in the memo. But we also have Jerry here and Tom, if we have specific questions about some of the capital items, like trucks and whatnot.
Eric, I'm sorry, is this different than the one that was provided in our packet?
I don't believe so.
This one also includes, yeah, I also added the CIP, cash-funded items.
Oh.
Was it clear that was going to be discussed or not?
That's...
Those are also, I have the umbrella of things, capital, those are included, so that's just an updated, more concise version.
Okay.
Eric, just because I can't myself.
Yeah, Sean.
It's our CNR, right? And ours being the town's CNR, and we're elected to represent the town, and we fit within the guidelines of the 416. So, we've not been asked to prioritize CNR in the past, so what exactly are they looking for here? Because, I mean, CNR is, as you've heard me all drone on for years now, it's a revolving fund, we pay ourselves back over a five-year period. It's meant to be the smaller, as Maria articulated, the non-hundred, lower than $100,000, but it's weighted smooth capital that we know is coming. We buy buses, we buy police cars, and we buy plows and dump trucks and everything else out of it, so they wouldn't be there if we didn't need them. So I guess, what are they looking for? And if you can, that's, I'm not expecting you to speak for them, but...
Yeah, so I think the argument to go through this exercise would be to, you know, in part to demonstrate to the Board of Finance that we are respecting the 1.75% guidance that they gave us. And then there's, of course, the 176, which is above the 416.
But those are funded through other...
So, right, I think those are the ones that, because those are certainly different than what we did in years past, and they're funded through cash. The reason that you may want to consider talking about both those, if you were going to prioritize that 176, I just wanted to also include CNR there in case there were items of a lower priority in CNR that you would instead have funded with cash in the 176,000. But I think to your point, Sean, you know, the 176 is really the piece that's new and different to them, that the initial feedback is they got their budget books, is where the questions were coming from, so...
It's new and different to them? We've paid cash every year for roughly a million dollars of capital items.
Right, but these are, I think because these are shown as being funded through the CNR, there were some questions about...
I told you that was going to be a problem if you put it on that schedule.
Correct.
So I'm very willing to, you know, defer to the wisdom of this board, but Sean, I mean, are you...
I'm not trying to be a pain in the neck.
No, it's okay.
I mean...
I welcome the conversation.
If there are other projects that got bumped from the Board of Ed, or there are other priorities from the Board of Finance, I'm not suggesting we don't do this, but we all vetted these projects with town staff, with Maria, with the Finance Department. There are not projects that got cut, and there are not additional projects that I'm aware of. And again, the Board of Finance has signaled to us that they're willing to go back to the six-and-a-half, 6.4% capital budget. Our job is to pass a capital budget, which we've done, and that's our prioritization. In years past, we've had to cut and make changes to projects, so I understand the prioritization. This year, unless I'm confused, there's nothing that's on the outside looking in. So unless they're going to change the number, if it's 1 through 10, or 10, I'm not understanding what they want from us. You know, and it's, I'm not suggesting we don't do this, but, you know, high, medium, and low, okay, we're still going to go to them with these projects.
Yeah.
And we're not recommending that any of them be cut.
Yeah.
So if we go back with high, medium, and low, and they change their mind on Wednesday night, is, we then go to the high, medium, and low? Is that what they're looking for?
So it's possible that after Wednesday's meeting, they come back to us and ask us to, you know, determine, hey, if there was, you know, whatever that dollar threshold is that we would need to cut, we could then come back to them with that recommendation.
Okay.
Well, to use one of Sean's favorite things, does any of this move the needle? I mean, this is not...
So it doesn't get us closer to the 175?
I mean, I need, I need a little, again, as a novice person here, to this request, so we submitted some requests, additional requests to our, the current budget, we added things in, okay? Those were not CNRs, those were mostly program-specific, service-specific, ongoing. So is that what then generated this request? Okay, you've asked for more, you've asked us to spend more and authorize more, so do you potentially need to look at this and take out something? Is that how basic we're thinking?
I think more specifically what provoked the request is the fact that we came in, you know, so much above the 1.75.
Well, look at them then, as Sean said, these were already, you all folks in your wisdom in the past, with working with the experts in your various departments, asked for their input and what we need, and you all agreed that these were necessary. So I think these are just, what we've proposed is additive. This is a foregone conclusion that these would already be respectfully accepted and moved forward, not prioritized.
So I'm, again, I'm comfortable with moving forward on Wednesday's presentation as is, without doing this exercise, if that's what, you know, this board wants to do.
I'm not objecting to it, I just, I want to make sure that we're delivering on what they want, and it's, is somebody on the Board of Finance confused as to what makes up the capital budget versus the operating budget? Because we came in on 17, we came in above 175 on our operating budget. Capital has nothing to do with the 175.
That's why I asked.
That's correct. So what are they, I don't understand why they want us to prioritize capital. If they have a problem with our operating expenditure, then we need to prioritize our operating budget.
We'll discuss that Wednesday night.
Right.
That's that, but this is...
If they have a problem with our capital budget, and they're going to 6-4, I would love to know what are the projects they think should be funded, and they should have sent them to us for part of the capital discussion.
And that may still come out of the Wednesday night meeting, some of this is in anticipation, I think. Part of this goes back, I think, as far back as the tri-board meeting, when the number that we were using, sort of as a placeholder, in fairness, before we got through the budget process, as the combined cash for capital and debt service line was 6 million. And we are, we happen to be, somewhat coincidentally, about $170,000 over that now. Our current debt service proposal, plus cash for capital, is 6.17. I think to the extent that those cash-funded projects have an effect on the mill rate, they would. If there were any that need to be delayed, or could possibly be delayed in the effort to lower the mill rate, that would be something that I think, but again, we could certainly wait until they give that feedback directly in a meeting, that's fine. But I think some of this, while we had a public, you know, a regular meeting on the books right now, and some of that feedback was starting to come as they got their budget books, that was sort of the reason for the request, as far as I understand it.
And I appreciate that. The problem is, is that the Board of Finance created the mill rate impact problem last year by lowering our capital expenditures. We did not recommend lowering our capital expenditures. The Board of Finance arbitrarily chose to lower it, therefore, when they want to go back to our traditional capital numbers, they're increasing the mill rate. We are not. We're going back to the guidance that they suggested of the six-and-a-half percent. So again, I'm not trying to get into war on finance here, but we recommend the operating budget. Yes, they have line item authority, but they changed the capital number last year, and we prioritized and conformed to their request. And that was after pulling the senior center and Henry James. So if we're 160 over, okay, it sounds like we need to have a discussion of, like, the revale appropriation, should that go into CNR? Because clearly, we have to do that, right? So that's not something that we can, you know, in terms of, so is that the exercise that they're looking for, you think, Sean?
Again, I don't have, it's difficult, but...
Sure.
Maybe we're, I think we're probably treading dangerously in the interpretation and assumptions, and certainly, I bet you their requests are valid as professionals, and we're just not clear, and maybe should we just get together on Wednesday night and ask for the clarity, and understand that they may have a great reason for asking this, and we just may be missing the interpretation here. So other than debate it endlessly...
I could see prioritizing those four things, if they're, if you, you know, if it would help be the 176 that's over, you know, I could do that, but...
I mean, it's 1, 1, 2, 3, right? Revale, we have to do. Deepwater Wind, we have already responded to, so that's basically one.
I think I spoke about my feeling about the Economic Development Study when we did it, but that's...
I mean, again, for some of us, it's a, it's a 1 and 1/2 to 2 when you compare it, right? I mean, speaking for everybody, and, yeah, I mean, we can live without electronic devices if they really need five grand.
Yeah, so the Economic Development Study is something that could be, you know, put off without significant, you know, consequence. The Deepwater Wind response, so this budget obviously kicks in July 1, and our hope is that the, we've come to a settlement before July 1. So one option, if the Board of Finance is comfortable with this, is that we could take away that 50,000 altogether, and then come to them with a supplemental appropriation request, you know, if it goes longer than we think it will. But that's something that, we don't have to figure this out now, we could have that conversation with them on Wednesday.
I mean, I applaud both you and Maria for having it in there, because in the past, we've gotten our hands slapped for going in there and asking for supplemental appropriation, but, I mean, yeah, I have no problem. I mean, again, I think we're trying to be even more transparent than the 100% that we've been in the past, and, guys, this is what we think might be coming. We're really doing our best at looking forward, so, again, if they want the 50 grand, I mean, they can have it, right? It's, but it, to the question that Cheryl said, it doesn't move the needle.
So what I'm hearing is that there's some consensus on getting with the Board of Finance on Wednesday, presenting the budget we have to them, and then if there are specific requests coming out of that meeting, we can follow up at that time.
I mean, to go back to something, I mean, generally, and again, your meeting, but are we, we pretty close that revale is one?
Yeah.
Deepwater Wind is a genuine attempt at a one, but it might go away? And that everything else is next on that list? I mean, does that everybody feel that way?
Yes.
Yeah.
So that we can go, I mean, we've had the discussion, right? We're not ignoring them.
No.
I mean, honestly, the Board of Selectmen Devices was meant to save staff time and supplies for, you know, the administrative office staff. It's not so that we can have something shiny and new on our desk. So, you know, if they would prefer to continue to use staff time to make piles of paper, then we could tell them that, but that's, that's fine.
I would, I would be very uncomfortable doing anything other than what we're talking about with the 176.5. I think the rest of the items are traditionally what we've done, we've kind of talked this all the way through. I would agree, I'm very concerned about not doing the Economic Development Study, because I think you keep pushing it off, and pretty soon, you're never going to get to it. And that doesn't help the town move forward at all. But I also understand it's a new world out there, it is changing, but I think we need some more clarity from them as to exactly what they're looking for.
Okay, I'm very comfortable with that. Any other conversation on this?
My only other point would be, do we want to, do we want to just put revale above the line? Because, I mean, that's a must-have, and that's traditionally been there. And put something else below the line, or do we want to leave it? And the line I'm talking about is the CNR line, and then the cash, being treated like CNR, but it's not, I mean, the revale is not an option. We have, it's not, it's not negotiable, we have to pay for it, right?
Right, there's no way that says we have to do it in quarters.
Historically, there have been years, I mean, it's usually proposed every year as either a one-fifth funding, it wasn't funded last year, though, so they were down to a one-quarter funding. In full disclosure, I believe the last time for revale, this request came through, the first couple of years, it was pushed off, and then in the fourth and fifth year, the full appropriations were made. Theoretically, you could do that, obviously, we don't feel like it's a best practice, and we feel like it should be in there, but it's, that's been done, so...
All right, so we can have the conversation.
Yeah.
But again, there's, okay, sorry, not to problem the conversation.
I'm comfortable with where we landed. Any other conversation? Okay, thank you. Hometown Heroes. The Hometown Hero Program recognizes residents for any deed or service that made our community a better place to live. With our new... With our new form of government, Maria has recommended some changes to the guidelines of the program. Most of them are pretty housekeeping in nature. The proposed changes are outlined in your packet. Were there any questions or discussion on those proposed changes?
Maria, would you mind just highlighting them so that everybody knows what we're talking about, since the public does have a lot of input in this program?
Sure. So again, most of the proposed changes are housekeeping in nature, where in some instances, the first select man or woman was previously referenced, but now that we have the manager form of government, there were some places, particularly around the administrative work with supporting this program, that we subbed out, again, for select man or woman, for town manager or town manager's office. We also, on the back page, under, again, selection committee, I think is another place to note, again, where with the change in form of government, that the town manager and, and the first select person would make a recommendation to the full Board of Selectmen, and that the full Board of Selectmen would be the appointing authority for the selection committee. But again, I think it was mostly housekeeping in nature.
Oh, I'm sorry, just one other point that we also spoke about. Eric and I talked with Joanne, who provides most of the staff support to this committee, and we thought that it was important to allow people to make submissions online, so she is working with our IT staff, so people can submit them the traditional method, which would be in writing, via, you know, US mail, or they'll be able to make submissions online this year as well.
I was just going to ask that.
Because I know in past years, the submissions have been kind of light, and I think allowing people to do it online will make a big, big difference, and we can promote it on Facebook, and people can click a link, and it'll be good. Any other comments on the proposed changes to the guidelines? Is there a motion effective March 26, 2018, to approve the revised Hometown Hero guidelines as presented?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Are we inserting a name?
No.
That's the second motion?
We got, we're doing this in two parts.
Fair enough.
All in favor? Any opposed? And that passes. So it is customary for the first selectman to serve on this committee, as well as a member of the opposite party, and Mike raised his hand. Thanks, Mike.
Excellent.
Excellent.
That's what I get the big bucks for.
There's the name.
So the selection committee also consists of a business leader, previous hometown hero, and a member of a veterans group, where we've got all of those members, except we're looking for someone from the historical society, right? So we're waiting on that. Is there a motion to appoint the following individuals as regular members of the Hometown Hero Selection Committee, with terms expiring December 2 of 2019? Myself, Eric Wellman, Mike Payne, Tom Haran, TJ Donahue, and Len Lanza.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? In favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion passes unanimously. Onto the Hot Meadow Street banner display policy. So this past December, the longtime volunteers who regularly hung the banners for various town and civic events have informed us that they'd no longer be providing the service. At our meeting on January 8, we approved a moratorium on the hanging of the banners until a policy and process could be developed, since this work would now be performed by town staff. Proposed policy is in your packet. Is there anything staff wanted to add to this?
Sure.
One item that is particularly a policy decision for you all to make is whether or not you would want to have a fee for the hanging and removal of the banners. We currently did have an existing fee for the hanging of banners, the banners that were on the light posts along Hot Meadow. That fee was established at $250. We were not always collecting that fee, to be honest about that, but we did go through, and we did a cost analysis, again, of the direct costs associated with hanging the banners, so not the front-end time, if you will, for processing the application, but what it really costs to hang the banners, and doing that cost analysis of staff time, we felt that if you wanted to simply recover that portion of the cost of hanging the banners, that a fee in the neighborhood of $150 would be appropriate. Again, that is a policy decision, so you could choose to have that fee, to not have that fee, to make it lower, to increase it, but I did just want to point out that particular issue for you. We also proposed, when we were looking at the existing policy for the light posts, hanging banners on the light posts in Hot Meadow, it seemed that there really, it didn't make a lot of sense to have two separate policies on hanging banners on Hot Meadow, so we would propose essentially rescinding that policy through the adoption of this policy, which would address both the banner over Hot Meadow, as well as the banners on the light posts.
So my only feedback that I share with Maria on this was, if we're going to be charging a $150 fee, I don't want to be in the business of giving any exceptions to that fee, because all of the organizations that are using this are nonprofit and civic organizations, and, you know, these are organizations that don't have a lot of money. But I didn't think that $150 would be prohibitive to an organization that was already spending, about, I don't know, about $1,000 on a banner, or whatever that cost. So is there any other thought or discussion, questions for Maria?
People are going to ask us for exceptions anyway. It's going to happen. It happens with every fee that we impose on any space that, you know, and it happens, and we should probably be prepared to deal with that. I was wondering about the insurance requirement. Have we done that in the past?
Sure. My understanding is that we have, but that also DOT has a requirement for providing proof of district of insurance as well.
So like, SETV and all those, they all provide it? Okay. I didn't know.
Right, I'm not sure for the banners along Iron Horse, what they're doing for that particular process. Perhaps our zoning agent may know?
I can speak for the Iron Horse ones, but yes, everything that you see that's in there for district of insurance, as far as being in Conson for, and DOT, it's currently, we do a checkbox.
You do that.
You have to show that to us now in order to get approved to go up there, so that hasn't changed, that remains the same.
That's a good idea. I was just wondering if that's, we actually enforce that.
It's a requirement. We actually, so what we end up doing to make it a little bit easier is we end up pulling the DOT permit, so that all these individual organizations aren't going to District 4 and kind of knocking at their door, and it takes them a long time to process. So we pull one permit, we make sure they're meeting all the requirements for us, all the requirements for them. If they do, then they get their approval.
Okay.
Yep.
Great, thank you.
Sean? How many of these are going up a year? 10?
No, on average, like, 20.
So we're looking at $2,500.
Which 96 million dollar budget?
So are you...
Which ones are we talking about? The crossing banners is 20, or there's the light pole projects? I'm sorry.
So...
No, I'm just asking the reference point, are you mixing terms here?
Hot Meadow Street banner is the only one that my office is currently involved in, so there's probably on average 20 that go up over Route 10. Jerry can speak to the lamp post banners, because I think he coordinated with maybe Main Street Partnership with those, I don't know how...
On average, three to four a year.
Because there's Sinsbury Celebrates, there's the Talke Mountain Music Fest, and one or two other chambers.
No, the Memorial Day, or, yeah, that's pretty much...
And just, I think I'm hijacking Sean's statement, but the comment or question, the, that had historically a 250 fee attached to it, is that what I heard?
Yeah.
But sometimes we waive it, but now we're talking about enforcing, but went down to 150, so I'm trying to get all my numbers.
So we're talking about $2,000 a year. I guess a question is, I don't want people coming and asking for exceptions and having to be debating that. I mean, would this board be in favor of having no fee? I'm just asking.
To save staff, the time of having to come in here and ask us for an exception that we're probably going to grant, yes.
How many fees have we collected, say, in the last year?
There's only four events.
Any?
Yeah, four.
So did we collect $250 for each of those? We did.
And we try and do it so when we're putting one up, we're taking another down, so in that case, we typically try and waive, you know, and if we can waive the fee, we'll...
Okay. And I am a little confused, I'm going to join you on this, with the pole banners. Didn't the chamber have an agreement about, with those, or no? I'm imagining that.
Those were Main Street.
That was Main Street, okay.
The pole banners, along 10, weren't those originally, the frames were put up by?
Main Street.
Main Street or by the chamber?
I think the chamber.
Actually, I stand corrected.
I thought it was the chamber, and then somebody else was going to use them, and we had a big back and forth, and so we're not going to do that anymore?
We're still going to put them up, take them down, yeah.
Right.
They're all part of this process.
Yeah.
Okay.
Big roles, and that's what Maria just talked about.
But some of those, like I said, I'm using my faulty memory here, but weren't some of those sponsored by local businesses, or something? They would have a banner, and, no?
At the DHSL ones.
Or am I thinking of Iron Horse?
No, you're thinking of, you're thinking of Main Street. When we did this plan originally, that we're proposing rescinding, the chamber objected to the new policy because they were using it for local businesses, and it, I think we had to be consistent, et cetera.
Okay.
And there was debate back in '13 when we put this policy in place, as to how that was going to get divided up, timing, you know, is it six weeks, is it eight weeks, is it 12 weeks? We then separated the Iron Horse banners from these, because those are traditionally used by the PAC, and we wanted to let them have it. So that was all hashed out back in '13.
Okay.
The way I look at it is that, I want to move on, is that it's $2,500 in a 96 million dollar budget, and if that, we can do this to expedite the process to get it done, and we can look at it as a form of economic development, because if we can waive the fee, and we have more organizations doing these types of event, and that makes them, that makes it easier for them to put on events, that savings, that's a way to promote and develop the fabric of our community in certain ways, so can we go?
Yeah, honestly, I think it's going to be worth the amount of effort it's going to take to enforce this.
I agree, and just one other comment, a public audience, Dave Ryan had had some concerns with it. The eight-week period is consistent with the current policy, correct, for the, for the light pole banners?
Yes.
So that's not, that's not going down.
That's not changing, nor is the two weeks for Hot Meadow Street.
All right, so that's consistent, so we're not taking anything away.
Those are exactly the same.
That's what I thought when I read it, but his comments got me hurt up. Okay, thank you.
So no change, thanks for clarifying that. Mike?
The one concern I had, and part of it was addressed with Martin Luther King being allowed in in January, grandfathered in, but also, I like the idea about not charging a fee. I think we just want to be cognizant that, not that I'm advocating charging a fee, but when stuff is free, people want you to be more flexible, and we need to be respective of staff time.
Yeah.
Having been, I'll be honest, the guy that did it, or that did half of it, at least one side of the pulling of the pulleys, it is a lot of work, and to do it right does take some effort. And also, I want to have folks know that Talke Mountain Music Fest hasn't always had a banner there, but typically, it goes on for a few weeks, so that people are aware during the four or five weeks that they're there, there is something up there. I would envision in reading this, you could read it a couple different ways, but you could also say, you get two permits of two weeks each to be able to do that. That is a huge, this banner is a huge economic driver issue, and it's very noticeable.
So you're suggesting that in Section I, we grant an exception, or an elongated period for an event like Talke Mountain Music Fest?
Or that, or they're allowed to take out two permits? The problem is, it says you can only have one permit.
I can speak to that just a little bit. We actually went back four years for Talke Mountain Music Festival, and they've only taken out a two-week permit for all four years.
Okay.
Now, have they had their banners up longer? They have, and one of the reasons is because there was nobody after them. So if there's no one after them, we can certainly, for something, an event like that, we can certainly keep it up longer in that, but we've never had it run into that issue. They could certainly pull two timeframes in a row if they had to, but they've never requested that.
And maybe it just seemed to me that I was back there down there again.
So to alleviate that, can we strike the ones per year for any organization? Just because right now, the policy technically doesn't allow them to do that, or anyone else. Is that, is that...
Or you want to put it twice per year?
Or twice per year?
Well, twice point, if it's free, people might try to do it.
All right, so you want to, I'd rather do, you're twice per year, you're right, versus nothing. Because then you're going to have, well, they've been up for too long, and it's not fair, and I want my zone. I don't want this back on our agenda, basically, is what I'm looking for.
Thank you for that.
Ever. This is the second time I've done this policy.
So the two changes I captured is twice per year and waiving a $150 fee. Is there anything else anyone would propose?
Can you just review for me, and maybe you can help me with this? So if a banner is damaged, falls down, you know, whatever, a truck hits it, you're not going to put it back up again, right? You get one shot on putting your banner up.
Well, the banner is now being put up by town staff, so it would be the Public Works Department and Culture Parks and Rec would make an assessment of the banner as they're putting it up. If they deem it not fit to go up, they essentially would not put it up.
Okay.
So they'll be putting it up correctly, so I wouldn't worry about it falling down.
We're not as far as those volunteers used to be.
What do you mean by that?
If a truck hits it, there's not going to be a banner left.
Well, I know, but I don't want them coming back and saying, wow, it got knocked down, I want to put it up again.
We'll burn that bridge when we get there.
Whatever happens, and a banner is damaged, the town, as it's written there, is not responsible for fixing your banner.
I understand that, I just don't want to be responsible for putting it up again, too, because you get one shot at it.
One and done.
One, done, that's your free shot.
One up, one down.
Can I ask for a point of clarification on the change to Section I, rescinding twice per year, for both the individual banner as well as the lamp posts, or just for the individual banner across Hot Meadow?
I was thinking just at the two-week banner. Eight weeks is, I mean, eight weeks is a lot of time, 16 weeks is...
Thanks for that. Yeah, Maria?
Also, just for clarification, so if I'm understanding consensus correctly, we would be eliminating Section D entirely?
Related to the fee?
That essentially addressed the fee, but I just wanted to make sure for the record that that's correct, that we would just be striking that section entirely.
I think so.
Okay.
I think so.
Does anybody feel strongly about that?
No.
I mean, I get the whole concept of cost recovery, but it's probably not cost recovery, and, again, they're nonprofits.
Yeah.
And they promote economic development, that's what I like.
We can just take an honor of our $60,000.
That's right.
Okay.
We'll take it out of the Board of Finance copying budget.
Any other proposed changes? Is there a motion effective March 26, 2018, to approve the Hot Meadow Street banner display policy with the two changes that we described?
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes unanimously.
Thank you for your work on this.
Now, is there any need for the second motion, given that we're not doing the fee?
Well, some of the banners that were approved for the current calendar year were approved under essentially the old policy, old guidelines, and we just felt, again, a good housekeeping measure would be essentially to grandfather those banners that were already approved, that we would just grandfather them as they were approved at that point in time.
Did they already pay a fee?
I don't believe so, because these would have been...
That's a good question.
I don't want to be...
That should check quick. Nobody pays a fee.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the list of banners for 2018 events as presented that were approved prior to the development and approval of the new Hot Meadow Street banner Street banner display policy?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and that passes unanimously. Thank you, by the way, for all of the time and developing.
Respectfully, I hope we never talk about this again.
Let's go back to talk about the seating plan for the.
Something really important.
How do you feel about the U-shaped?
Yeah, let's go ahead.
Alright, okay, carry-in, carry-out. So on May eighth of last year, the Board of Selectmen adopted the carry-in, carry-out policy for parks, so basically the removal of trash cans. Since that time, myself and I know other members of this board and town staff have received complaints that, one, that some parks are dirtier, and, two, that some people feel that it makes the parks less kid or pet friendly. And for me, at least, the complaints have all centered around, or primarily centered around, Iron Horse and Rotary Park. So I thought that with the warmer weather around the corner, we could ask the Culture Parks and Rec Commission to evaluate the policy and provide us with any recommended tweaks or changes. And to me, I understand that there were really good reasons for putting this in place. It was well researched. The way I'm looking at it is, this is, you know, we're a year in and this is just about continuous improvement and, you know, adjusting if needed.
Eric, I'm going to step up.
Oh, oh, sure.
I should step up.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Any thoughts on this one, around the referral to Culture Parks and Rec?
Well, I don't mind referring it to Culture Parks and Rec, but I'm not sure if my opinion has changed about why we should do this. Perhaps we need some public education campaign about why we do this and, you know, the benefits of it, but I think all of the reasoning that was behind putting this in place to begin with still holds. You know, there were valid safety concerns regarding wildlife, pests, you know, all sorts of things. And it is a policy that has been adopted by like the National Park Service and a variety of state, states have instituted this type of policy because, number one, for wildlife, you don't want them to rely on human waste for food. It attracts bears, it attracts raccoons and other rabid-type animals. And it, it does become unsightly even when a garbage can is full. So it's, I think if people could sort of be, sort of retrain themselves to, to take care of their own garbage, then, then that's a good thing. But, I mean, I understand that, that people litter and that's what happens, but I, you know, when we have more bees and mosquitoes, they're not going to be happy either.
Yeah. No, no, I don't disagree. And I think if, an outcome of this might be to provide better signage or public education. I just want to make sure that those, that we, you know, have that conversation and do that due diligence before the weather gets warmer. I don't see this as, you know, the recommendation coming back, oh, we better bring back the trash cans. Sean?
I mean, I, memory serves me correctly, we left, the, the dog park still has a trash receptacle, right? And they pay, they pay for that independence, so, again, it doesn't solve Iron Horse, but from a, from a public health standpoint, that one, that one stays in place. I mean, I, I think we've gotten some of the feedback from folks that are utilizing the playground in particular, right?
That's the only one I've heard.
Respectfully, I mean, we've all got a different perspective on this. There's a thousand Starbucks cups down there, whether there's a trash can or not. These people, I mean, it's, I'm not going to speculate on the age, but the individuals that are not of voting age that spend time down there, I think are utilizing it for different purposes. So, I mean, we could put one back, we can study it. I have a two-year-old and a French Bulldog. What I bring with me, I take home. You know, it's, it's, it's a pain in the neck, but it's what I'm used to. It's beaches and other places. So I'm all for looking at it again. I would just, I don't want us to just go back because a couple of people are upset. We, we do, we need to change behaviors and it's, to me, it's not about the money. If we can, alright, it's fifteen grand to the conversation we just had, we can put the fifteen grand back, but is that what our town staff is for? Is that what we should be spending our time on, not necessarily our money on? To me, I don't think so. You know, I'd rather have them, you know, helping make the town look better and, and doing all the other work that they have to do versus, you know, you can take your Starbucks cup home with you or, you know, throw it in the, it should go in the recycle bin anyway.
Throw it in your car.
So I'm, I'm all for looking at it, but I, I don't want to encourage another recommendation counter to what we got, which would be my only hesitation by sending it back to Culture Parks and Rec.
Yeah, and I would hope that whatever the, the memo is that, that they get, it, you know, makes it clear that we're not looking necessarily for a revamping of the policy. To me, you know, we've been about a year into it and weather's about to get warmer and it's just an opportunity to say, are there any, any changes we would either make to the policy or anything from a public education standpoint or signage that can be done?
Yeah, I mean, so the way the proposed motion reads, I think captures the essence of that, so.
Okay.
Well, and I think, you know, signage could be good. I mean, maybe that would help.
We've gotten, we've gotten feedback that we need to improve wayfinding period in the downtown area, right? Not only with respect to trash, but facilities, restaurants, the whole nine yards.
Okay. I, I mean, I got hammered by people on this. I mean, those are like the wrong things and.
It's all your fault, Chris.
How, how could you and what'd be done and who does this and, and, and again, it's kind of a surprise because there is a level of maturity and self-responsibility that's come in, into the conversation here. And I certainly have a, you know, I've got a dog and four children and we generate a fantastic amount of waste, but I always seem to, you know, remember some of the, just the basic tenets of being a human being as you grow up, you learn, one of the things you don't do is, is you don't litter. I don't know where that, I don't know how that slips people's minds. Just to hold something and let go of it is a foreign concept to me. That being said, I think that, that Iron Horse, and I would only, and I support the Parks and Rec folks looking at this as experts versus the Board of Selectmen. Again, as we have a year into it, reevaluate, and I think that Iron Horse, I can remember the, one of the reasons, one of the first times I got some incredibly angry texts was that one Thursday when it was seventy-five degrees and half of the town descended on Iron Horse after three months of being locked out of there. So then people just, they're excited, get down there and then realize, okay, so I've forgotten that there is no trash can here from last year. My first day, plus it's just a massive use of people. But that, from that one day, it looked as if it was, you know, a third world country there. And that was, that was somebody had described it to me. And I was like, wow, that's a pretty strong visual. I went down there myself and I found lots of trash and I was quite surprised and disappointed. And I decided that, I think, the last thing I'll say is that I think that Iron Horse itself is unique in the space because you have the exercise, you have the sidewalk and the amount of exercising that goes on there. You've got the dog walking that goes on there. You've got kids traveling back and forth after school. You've got Rotary Park. You've got teams playing sports on the field there. You've got the S-PAC Center. So it and to itself is a different facility for usage of all those types versus Curtis Park. So I think maybe we, the experts will come back and say, we have thought about this and our, and the, we have an evolved thinking and maybe here there's a different consideration versus someplace else in town. Because of all the converging dynamics that occur there.
Yeah, I think that's a possibility.
Sure. I, yeah, I don't want to reargue the whole thing again. I mean, I trust Jerry and his staff to know, you know, what's going on out there, but I'm...
Yeah, and I don't, I don't intend to. I just want to make sure that we're doing, doing our due diligence before the weather gets warmer about a year in. Were you going to add anything, Jerry?
Yeah, I would just add a couple things and I think I put in my memo originally to Maria, the Park and Rec Commission did talk about this at their last meeting and they left it that they did want it monitored, much as like is what you're asking for. And they did talk about the possibility of adding a barrel pack just to that area and they opted not to, but they want to, you know, look at it further. I would agree, there is, it's somewhat of a unique area. The other thing is, we have staff down there because of the nature of it, of the field use and the pack use, we have people there every day and they're picking up after these people. So it's not like we're going to just let it, you know, let it sit there, we're not. I observed the same thing, I think the, the times I've gone down, it seems like fast food materials, cups and wrappers and things like that, that people have just opted not to take with them. And, you know, I've got to say, overall, it's been a very successful initiative. I, I'm surprised that, it just seems to be that one area that it's, it's not really taken, you know, taken shape. I think by and large, and when I first called a lot of these sports organizations when we adopted this, they immediately said, fine, we're on, you know, we're on board, we'll take care of it. And really, the, the biggest thing we fought, too, is the illegal dumping, the household waste and the things like that that people bring, which is pretty much going away. I mean, I think it has achieved the intent in that respect. And by and large, all the satellite parks, they've never been as clean. So from that standpoint, I think it has been successful. This seems to be the one spot that we're kind of, and, and we did, we, I think the signage, we've got signs at every entrance now. Maybe we need to go back to what we did when it was first enacted, get more on the website. It's on the town's website, the, the image of the, the sign is on there, it's on ours. But we can do a little bit more, too. We'll stay, try and be a little more conscious of that. But we're going to watch it and we'll, you know, like I said, they want to report back at their next meeting and we will, you know, we will give them that. But I will say, our staff time is better used now. And, and we are doing things that we weren't able to do before and things that desperately needed to be done that contribute to the attractiveness of this town. And things that we struggle to keep up with, those fifteen man-hours per week are making a big difference in other areas. So from that standpoint, I think it has been a real success as well.
Great. Thank you.
Nice.
Any other conversation on this?
Okay. Is there a motion effective March twenty-six, twenty-eighteen to refer the carry-in, carry-out policy for our parks and fields to the Culture Parks and Rec Commission? The purpose of the referrals, to evaluate the effectiveness of the policy and assess whether or not any modifications to the policy are needed. The Culture Parks and Rec Commission will be asked to present its findings to the full Board of Selectmen.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously and let the record show that Mike abstained from that conversation. Welcome back, Mike. I'm going to need you for this next agenda item. So before we get to economic development, the recruitment and appointment process for unaffiliated voters. So I wanted to have a discussion about, you know, basically about thirty-eight percent of registered voters in our town are not affiliated with any political party, and that's a number of people that's greater than either Democrats or Republicans. And currently, there are very limited opportunities for people who are unaffiliated to serve in their town government on appointed boards and commissions. And I felt that it's, you know, personally, that it's a loss for our town and a missed opportunity. And I say that because many talented and qualified people are unable to serve. And I've had a conversation with Mike about this and that's why the submission's coming jointly from both of us. Mike, anything you wanted to add about your feelings?
No, I, I think that frankly, this is a representative form of government. That's where we're supposed to be. We should do our best to try to represent everybody in town. I'm not quite sure how we're going to do that, but let's have the discussion and see how we can do our best to try to accomplish that.
So our proposal was to put together a bipartisan work group to review the recruitment and appointment process of unaffiliated voters, do some benchmarking, because you go to different towns and you'll find that they handle it, you know, in many, many different ways. So our thought was to understand how other towns in Connecticut do it and whether there are elements from those towns that we think would work for Simsbury. Any discussion on this? Sean?
My only unsolicited guidance would be, I would be hesitant to increase, suggest increasing any commissions as a result of this finding, because we already, regardless of party, have pretty substantial challenges of filling a lot of these boards and commissions and keeping good folks to serve. So I would, unless there's a very specific or good reason for it, I'd be hesitant to try to increase the numbers of any of these if that was the route that we were possibly going on.
Yeah.
Do we have any feedback from the town clerk's office on how the online volunteer registration is going? Because that doesn't require a party affiliation. I've been seeing, every once in a while, Erica sends, you know, an email saying so-and-so volunteered for this or that committee or, you know, can we fit them in or, you know, we refer it to a town committee or if it's unaffiliated to, to the rest of the board.
I think we've had some, my understanding is limited, success with that and in part, you know, my assessment speaking with her is that we're not really posting vacancies and how do we communicate that there are vacancies? So right now, it's sort of more just somebody might stumble across the form or maybe has an interest and is sort of searching for it, but that, it's not maybe the most user-friendly. And again, perhaps we could be a little more proactive in terms of announcing potential vacancies and again, how do we reach those people who aren't affiliated with the party so they understand that there are vacancies and how they might be able to participate in that process? So I think that's the piece in speaking with Erica that I think is missing right now.
I think as part of this, too, and one of the things we discussed, if you go and visit, let's just say, the Conservation Commission's website, you know, theoretically, there could be a link on there saying, you know, express interest. And it's just a, just making, thinking of ways to make it more user-friendly for people to raise their hand and say, hey, I'm interested in getting involved.
Please do so on that one, because that one's, that's one of the hardest commissions to fill.
Just random example, but.
It's a perfect example.
Appreciate that.
The town, I know at least one town committee spends the majority of their nominating time trying to keep folks on that commission, so that would be greatly appreciated.
So I don't know where we're going to land on this, but I largely see this as a, you know, start with a benchmarking opportunity and just understand what are other towns doing and what do we think could work.
Go forth and benchmark.
Well, in the interest of shameless promotion, we just.
Community for Care?
No, no, the three-hundred-and-fiftieth Committee. We just opened up a totally nonpartisan, fill in your name, give us your information so we can contact you form on the website. It just says Simsbury three-fiftieth, so it doesn't matter who you are, where you belong to, or anything else. So you can volunteer.
Great. So is there a motion effective March twenty-six, twenty-eighteen to establish a work group of the Board of Selectmen to review the recruitment and appointment process for unaffiliated voters to appointed committees, commissions and boards? The work group is tasked with researching and benchmarking how other communities recruit and appoint unaffiliated voters to appointed committees, commissions and boards and for presenting its findings and recommendations to the full Board of Selectmen.
Second.
Some, some moved? Some moved?
That was you moving.
Oh, did I move it? Alright, I moved it. You started it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great.
You want the second one? I'll move that we appoint Eric Womack and Mike Payne to the working group.
Oh, second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Move on that quick.
Thank you for that, Sean. I figured you couldn't make that motion.
That'll help you out with that one.
Appreciate it. Okay, and this is what I've been waiting for, a discussion on economic development. So when it comes to moving forward, which I know is an interest of this board, there are several moving pieces. One is reconstituting the Economic Development Commission. The second is the concept of an economic development strategic plan. And the third piece is really the process and how we get there. Do we, do we start with a strategic plan and let that guide what a commission would look like? Or do we form a commission that would guide us through the strategic plan? Or do we potentially not do a strategic plan and rely on a lot of the work that's, that's already been done? So there's a lot of moving pieces to this. I think where I'd like to end tonight, what I've learned is that the Town Charter requires an ordinance to reform the Economic Development Commission. So there are going to be some, some steps in time in doing that. I think I'd like to end, end the discussion on, you know, moving that forward if the board wants to, but just, I want to get your response to, you know, those thoughts that I've been having and hear what you've been thinking about as it relates to moving the economic development conversation forward.
I think we should pay attention to what our last Economic Development Chair was telling us and I think I said this when we were talking about the new money for this, take the document prepared by the Economic Development Task Force and if that, you know, make a working group of this board and review what we have and then see what we, you know, where we have to fill in the blanks. But as Chris pointed out, you know, a lot of this work was done. We can, we can go forward from that. It had a lot of different recommendations about who participates and how that looks and I think we should use that. We also have other town doc, studies and documents that have been done on economic development and we've got quite a few of them that should be reviewed. You know, I know it's a tedious process, but it's, some of that has been done for us.
So I want to just make sure we're talking about the same documents. So there's the Economic Development Task Force, which put together a set of specific recommendations on activities. But then there's the document that the former EDC put together, which is in our packet, which comes up with recommendations on the formation and activities of a new Economic Development Commission. And one of the things listed in that document is the idea of a strategic plan. So I just wanted to make sure we're not confusing documents, because as you said, there's a lot that's already been done.
There is a lot that's already been done. I, you know, strategic plans are good, but I think that we're going to end up in the same circle we've been going around in. If we do that, you know, we're going to have, we're going to hire a consultant, we're going to all go around and get public input and do it again and make another document and then we're all going to sit here and look at another document and say, okay, now then we're all going to sit here and look at another document and say, okay, now what do we do? So, I mean, this, this has happened before. So I think that we should take the Economic Development Task Force document, because that included not only members from the EDC, but members of this board, community members, business leaders, you know, everybody. And let's start with that.
Subthoughts?
So, I'm looking into the potential motion, and I agree with it, but is it, is it a little bit ahead of itself in that, do we need the working group to answer some of those questions first? In terms of what do we want to be? I mean, we've, we've got a lot of information, and I don't want to spend a lot of time on this, but I also don't want to form a commission and then say, go, and what are we doing?
That's what I was proposing, is that a working group from this board review the Economic Development Task Force recommendations, and then come back and say, either we go forward with this, or we need to get, do additional actions to get to the ordinance.
So I guess it's an order of operations. Do you want the recommendation first, and then the ordinance to be borne out of that? Do you want both? Because again, I want to move this along, as I think you do, right? But we've, we've well intentionally put an ordinance out before, and then it gets beaten up, and then we have six public hearings and go back and forth, and I'd love to avoid that.
I would, I'm sorry. I would think we want first to decide what this board wants, then we can write an ordinance to accomplish that goal, for lack of a better term. I think to, to, it'd be grossly unfair to create a new EDC commission without our direction to, I think that's a horrible thing to do, my personal feeling.
I think in the conversation, I'm sorry for interrupting. In the conversations that I've had with members of the former EDC, I think one of the things that was missing was clear direction from the Board of Selectmen as far as what we wanted to task them with, and that's super important, so. So going a step further, would that working group basically determine what, what are the activities that a EDC would do, and then that would help guide what that EDC needed to look like? Is that the thinking?
Yeah, with the ultimate goal of drafting the ordinance, once, once we got the, you know, again, instead of going straight to the ordinance, let's make sure that it's what everybody thinks makes sense from a community standpoint. We get public audience participation, et cetera, and then we can more expeditiously implement the ordinance, right? Versus multiple public hearings and back and forth, because that costs money, and staff time, and lawyers, and everything else. Simply put, trying to cut to the chase so that when we do the ordinance, it's, everybody's on the same page, it's quick, clean, and we get it done, and then we can all move forward.
I mean, I think we all want to get to a new Economic Development Commission with a new direction from us. And I think we all know that, you know, we're going to have to take the lead here and be very involved in what that mission is for the new Economic Development Commission. So, you know, it's a starting point.
I think, because Chris is in here, I think we should nominate him.
I second that.
That's what happens at work when you miss a meeting, you get put on the project.
You do get put on a committee, yes.
Are there, speaking of which, are there folks here who would want to raise their hand for that working group?
I don't, I would, I, you know, but I don't want to take it from anybody else who's...
Uh-uh.
Sure.
All I want, all I want to say is I hope it moves fast. Okay? Because this is, is, this is incredibly frustrating when you read the last sentence. The paragraph says, "In August 17, you know, August 2015, the former Economic Development Commission issued recommendations regarding a new Economic Development Commission..."
Exactly.
"...which was referred to. The report provides suggestions regarding duties and responsibilities for the commission membership, resources needed to support economic development strategies." So let's, whatever it does is too quick, because I, to some extent, don't understand what we're doing, but we'll move forward.
This is the way government works.
Well, from an historical perspective, we couldn't move in August because the charter was about to change.
Change, I understand that.
So the soonest we could have acted was the first meeting in December.
After the new charter was adopted.
December.
December was really...
So it sounds like we can move quickly now.
We can, but candidly, we've had a few things going on.
Agreed. You know, I also purposely wanted Maria to be in the chair, and then we're dealing with budget, and now we're talking about it.
Fair enough, all that stuff is great. Let's move.
Alright. So I've got Sean interested, Cheryl interested.
I'm not sure if he can do it this way.
Really? It's okay?
Nope, you're good.
Okay, I'll raise my hand as well.
I'll be part of the conversations.
Okay, great.
Honestly, I think we're all going to be part of the conversation. I mean, I don't, I don't see this as something that's going to happen, you know, in one room, and we're all going to come in.
I want to, I want to be there, but candidly, my schedule in the next two months is not going to allow me to attend more subcommittee meetings. I don't want to slow it down.
Kids' sports, it's...
I'll give you plenty of flack up here, but...
I'm sure.
This is going to be something that goes forward from this board altogether, so, hopefully.
And if we can share when they're having the meeting, if we can attend?
Yeah.
I think that would be wonderful.
Right, yeah.
And to the extent I can, I'm happy to join in. I just, I don't want to overpromise or slow things down.
Great.
Okay.
So, we've got a motion.
What was that motion exactly?
Yeah, how will we put that motion?
So I think it's, it's basically the same, it's to move effective March, I move that we, effective March 2, that's the... 26, 2018, that we establish a working group of the Board of Selectmen to review the prior work of the Economic Development Commission, the recommendation of the Economic Development Task Force, as well as the potential study, to ultimately lead to and prepare a draft ordinance regarding an Economic Development Commission as required by Section 609 of the Charter. Once the ordinance is adopted, the Economic Development Work Group will be tasked with vetting the potential Economic Development Commission members and making recommendations for appointment to the full Board of Selectmen.
Second.
Confusing enough?
Okay. Great, second. Any further discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, that passes unanimously. Moving on to appointments and resignations, is there a motion to accept with our thanks for resignation? I don't know if we're accepting, yeah, we're accepting with our thanks, the resignation of April Schmidt from the Aging and Disability Commission?
I would move that, and she's been an excellent member of the commission, and unfortunately, she's moving out of town, and we will miss her.
Thank you then, to her.
Yeah. Was there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Right. We've got minutes from the March 10, 12, and 15 meeting. Are there any changes that anyone would suggest?
Left out my comments chastising people for leaving their keys in their car.
That's okay, I put it in my first selectman's report tonight.
You did, huh?
We're covered.
Got that.
We good here? Okay, so the minutes stand as presented. Are there any liaison and subcommittee reports?
Till they go to work or the evening, no.
I gave my 350th little pitch.
Nice, okay. Anybody else? Okay. Communications, any of those items anyone wanted to discuss?
We doing Johnny's Junk Day?
I'd never heard it referred to as that.
That's how it started. Don't we, yeah. It's Linda's Litter Lugging Day. Now it's Johnny's Junk Day.
Well, now it's sort of combined in the Farmington Valley Trails cleanup.
So we don't need to approve this, because there's a motion on it?
Oh, there is? Are they, aren't they the same now, or no?
Yeah, typically that's happened in the park.
Yeah, they were looking to use our parking lot, so this...
Oh, for the parking lot, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Is that something we need to, I thought there was a chance that that could just be done with staff approval, but we could, we could do that.
Yeah, my understanding is that the practice has been that the board has approved the use of the parking lot as opposed to administrative approval.
Gets us to talk about it.
Yeah, got it.
So I'm, I, I move effective March 26, 2018, to grant permission to State Representative